We have ordinances on second reading. One, in order to avoid the redevelopment development plan in the city of New Brunswick. We have ordinances on first reading. One, in order to amend and supplement the revised federal orders for the city of New Brunswick. Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.28, Fee Schedule, Section 3, 28, 120. Parks and Recreation Fees to amend the recreation fees for baseball leagues. Two is to amend the Management Salary Ordinance, Chapter 218, 2020, Title IV Deputy Police Chief. We have Resolutions. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll, November 10 to 11/23. Number three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve submission of recycling enhancement grant, regular application for the Millices County Division of Solid Waste Management for enhancing recycle of the New Brunswick program, amount $7,500. Number five, approve award of contract with Moore &amp; Salt Incorporated, created Rock Salt for Public Works and Water Utility Departments, term 12-month period, commencing December 6, 2018, and ending November 30, 2019, not to exceed $76,000 in Millices County Cooperative Purchasing Program, CK-12, Millices, Strongboard, Salt Incorporated. Number six, approve payment of conflict public defender services, Thomas P. Avote, LLC, not to exceed $900. Seven, approve amendment resolution R. 061891, reasonable additional amount of $89,999.50. Authorize shared service agreement with the city of New Brunswick and Rutgers State University for 911. Emergency communications and radio dispatching services for the police department, not to exceed $89,999.50. Eight, resolution authorizing budget transfers, 2018 municipal budget. Nine, approve amendment of resolution R. 091814, reasonable additional amount of $28,195 to pay outstanding invoices for the water department, the Suburban Consulting Engineers Incorporated, engineering services for Rutgers Village Water Main Replacement Project, specification number 614, 17 of RMP, not to exceed $28,195. Ten, approve amendment resolution R. 111824, additional amount of $6,400 for the Division of Parks and Safety, the Sal Electric Company Incorporated for electrical maintenance and repair services, term 12-month period commencing February 4, 2018, ending February 3, 2019, specification number 49415P, not to exceed $6,400. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Number 11, approve amendment resolution R. 111820, additional amount of $5,000 for police extra duty services with AA Burns, LLC, ADA ramp improvements at various locations, specification number 927-18, not to exceed $5,000. Twelve, approve amendment resolution R. 081823, supplemental services number four, with Remington, Vernick, and Venna Engineers, or licensed site remediation professional for site environmental services, amount $2,150. Thirteen, approve Chapter 159 budget insertion, US Bureau of Justice assistance, for bulletproof vest partnership grant, amount $10,965.53. Fourteen, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by J. Superinsun Trucking and Reeding Company Incorporated, place Crane on French Street to pick air handling units for Robert Wood Johnson Barnum's Hospital, beginning on Friday, November 30, 2018, at 9:00 p.m., and completed Saturday, December 1, 2018, at 10:00 p.m., alternate days, Friday, December 7, 2018, to Saturday, December 8, 2018, not to exceed. Fifteen, approve resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the city of New Brunswick Police Department and the Millices County Prosecutor's Office for specialized investigative law enforcement equipment. Sixteen, authorize tax collector to transfer overpayments on several tax and utility accounts. Seventeen, approve amendment resolution R. 111839, change order number two, World Corporation Incorporated doing business as World Construction Incorporated for senior citizen center exterior improvements, specification number 909-17, amount $18,000. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Eighteen, release the site performance guarantee in the amount of $47,934 to Johnson &amp; Johnson for Jane J. WH at World Headquarters Parking Lot Expansion, 501 George Street, Lot 3601, Lot 101. Number nineteen, release of site performance bond guarantee in the amount of $107,238.80 for College Crossings, LLC, for Borland Funeral Home, 188 East Avenue, Lot 67, Lots 4-9, 32-36, and 37.01. Twenty, approve authorization to advertise furniture delivered one articulated wheel loader with cab for the Parks Department, specification number 736-19P. Twenty-one, approve award of contract with B&amp;W Construction Company of New Jersey for equipment and labor, term 24-month period commencing December 6, 2018, and ending December 5, 2020, rebid, specification number 698-18PR, not to exceed $599,000. Twenty-two, approve award of grant for rehabilitation home improvement, one grant for Diane K. Heel, 20 counter average, not to exceed $21,300. Twenty-three, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Ankle Crane, place a crane in the Bristol Myers Swift Children's Hospital, pedestrian entranceway in order to form a coil replacement of the roof on the roof of the hospital, date Saturday, December 15, 2018, alternate date Saturday, December 22, 2018, time 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Twenty-four, approve service agreement with Everbridge for a Nixle notification system, term three-year term commencing January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2021, not to exceed $17,010. We have items to our council, proposed city council meeting schedule for next year, and public to set it out. You know what comes to our, the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming is absent. Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Please be advised that notice requirements of the open public meeting act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, the previous sufficient notice, the time and place and conduct of all public meeting for the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed, and the city clerk has been placed on an appropriate bulletin in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, Coral News. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
A moment of silence, please, for our former president, George Bush, and all the armed forces around the world, especially those who have lost their lives, limbs, et cetera. Thank you. Okay, we have minutes.
We have motion to approve minutes.
Second.
You're up.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Report pending for a final by the city clerk.
Yes, we do. A copy of the receptor evaluation form for the New Brunswick Board of Education, Sanford K. Center, number one, to the NJDEP Site Remediation Program. Item number two, a copy of the city of New Brunswick zoning board of adjustment annual report, 2017. Item number three, a notice of the public hearing taking place on Monday, December 10, at the planning board meeting regarding Colgate Paper Stock Company, Inc. Item number four, a public notice of the request for the NJDEP flood hazard area for 298 Jersey Avenue, New Brunswick, New Jersey. Item number five, a notice from PSENG of the upcoming vegetation management work to begin January 1, 2019. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have open hearings. We have one on second reading, ordinance to avoid the redevelopment development plan in the city of New Brunswick. If anybody has any comments on that, please come to the microphone. You have five minutes, one time, state your name, raise your order of reference.
Good evening, council. Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I know it was alluded to at a prior meeting that there's new opportunities for this site. Can we just learn a little bit more about what those opportunities are, what might we expect to see at this site if we move forward with avoiding this and going ahead with the new plan?
Is there a pattern or is it locked?
Here is in the typically designated opportunity zone, and the state has designated it as part of an innovation hub. Those are two programs that will be able to assist the development in the area. It's an area that is near the hospital and the medical school campus. There's opportunities there for either expansion of those institutions or facilities that would be related to them. We want to take another look at that. This plan was done back in 2007, 2008. The economy has changed somewhat since then, so I want to take another look at it and don't want to leave a sort of an outdated plan out there for that area.
Thanks very much. Could we just give a little info on the timeline for when another plan might be put forth by the planning board?
Any idea?
Don't miss the timeline.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in order to amend and supplement the revised, our articles of the city of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.28, Fee Schedule, Sections 3, 28, 120. Parks and Recreation Fees regarding amendment recreation fees, baseball leagues.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 19, at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Number two, amend the management salary ordinance, 2018 to 2020, Title IV Deputy Police Chief.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 19, at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Number two, amend the management salary ordinance, 2018 to 2020, Title IV Deputy Police Chief.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 19, at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have resolutions one through twenty-four. Anyone from the public who should speak again, you have five minutes, one time.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'd like to ask about resolution number seven, the renewal of the shared services agreement with Rutgers for 911 emergency communications and dispatch. So I just hear a little bit about how the agreement's going so far, and presuming it's a success if it's being renewed. Can you maybe ask Captain Miller to speak about the transition and how it's going?
Well, sorry, I know it's going very smoothly. It's all in terms of all the companies that get that there.
Before Captain Miller speaks, could I just clarify, this is not a renewal. It was executed in July.
Second half of it.
The original agreement contemplated some additional expenses the city would have to bear under the agreement. There was an addendum done in September, and this is the additional money needed to pay for the cost of moving certain radio systems over there, licensing, that type of thing. So I'm sorry.
Captain Miller? Captain Miller, how's it going?
Transition's going very well. A few little bugs is to be expected, but they'll work out without any problems. The communication between us and Rutgers makes the transition go well.
Thanks. On the next page, I do want to ask about two resolutions here. Number 11 is police extra duty for ADA ramp improvements, and I just want to understand, so the money is being paid to the company doing the ramp improvements, and then they're going to give the money to the police, or is it just going straight to the police?
Thank you. Colonel Scrivell.
I'm sorry, I can speak to that, yes. In accordance with the warrants we passed this last year, the city now is going to pay the police directly, but this, what we're doing is we're just essentially encumbering the funds specific for the project. In the past, we would pay the contractor, including an allowance of police, they wouldn't be paid until we knew that the police were paid, but in this case, starting to chase all these folks, we're actually paying the police, this is just an attempt, an effort to encumber the funds, so we have all the funds that are identified for each specific project.
Excellent. Thank you. So could I just get some information on where these ramps will be installed?
There's in various locations throughout the town. We have, I don't recall exactly off the top of my head, but there, certainly there's one on Troop and Lee, there is an issue there. That's one I recall. Also, there's a section of the concrete along Moore Street, which is very big.
Troop or Lee, okay.
Not Troop, I beg your pardon. It would be Fulton Lee, my apologies. Likewise, this also includes a piece of sidewalk and ramp along Moore Street, along the cemetery, which is in bad shape, and I don't, there's, oh, Eighth and JK approaching the high school, Ninth and JK approaching the high school. Then when the work at the stadium was done, there's two handicap ramps that were set up on either side of the entrance by the ticket booth. We're going to pick up the ones across the street so they match. Likewise, there's a large egress of the middle school that crosses Joyce Kilmer to use Memorial Stadium for part of their phys ed activities. We're going to improve all the ramps for those crossings.
Thank you very much. And so I guess it's just mostly street corners, it's on in the right way.
That's correct.
Thank you. Want to also ask about fifteen? The, this is a MOU with the prosecutor's office for specialized investigative law enforcement equipment. Could you please ask Captain Miller to elaborate on what exactly this MOU covers?
And I believe, again, it's previous stuff that we kind of also, Captain Miller?
Yeah, we sign the MOU every year with the county. Any police department that wants the shared equipment that they have is required to sign the MOU. The majority of the equipment is surveillance equipment and covert equipment, so I'm not going to speak in detail on what each piece is, but it just allows us to use the county equipment, so we don't have to purchase the stuff ourselves.
Okay. Any weapons or just other equipment?
No weapons.
Thank you, that's all I have on the resolutions.
Anyone else on the resolutions?
Resolutions?
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorah Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
We have the proposed city council meeting schedule, left out there, whatever, with some dates around July 4th, we'll change that for the city.
Yes. What are the two dates, Leslie? July, and what else? The end of the year?
So we only have a meeting on July 2nd as opposed to the first Wednesday of the month?
Which is the 3rd, right?
Yes. So it'll be the 2nd instead of the 3rd, and we will also be having our year-end meeting on December 27 at 4:00 p.m.
4:00, okay. Anybody else on the council that has anything to discuss? Go to the public portion of the meeting. Again, we have things to say, please come to the microphone. Five minutes, one time, up please.
Yes, the new Moore 333 Somerset Street. Two months now, I did give a list for city lights to be taken care of. I will thank you for parts of Joyce Kilmer being replaced, Somerset being replaced, but I see plenty of lights still out on Middleston Avenue. The only light that was fixed on Middleston Avenue was directly in front of middle school.
Okay, is that listed on your list that you gave to public service, do you know?
If it was on Ms. Moore's original list, yes, that list was submitted to PSENG by Tom Bolimpie's office as well as the mayor's office.
Okay, and still some that are out, right?
Yes, that's where I will give you the same list again, due to where I have it marked with the five lights that are out, that's right in front of the sheriff's office, where I'm surprised they didn't say anything about how dark it is.
Okay, we'll take the list and resubmit.
Okay, and then also, like I said, normally I don't go around inspecting, but like I said, due to where I've been entirely, too many streetlights out, okay, I have a list for you for Jersey Avenue, starting from Hay Street. You have 13 lights out. How black it is there, you can't even see the sidewalk if it wasn't for some of the warehouses with their spotlights. I'm like, wow, I wouldn't even walk down Jersey Avenue due to where it's so dark. So yes, here are two lists, and like I said, hope to see them be done. Like I said, over 13 lights in one area, something's not being done the right way, or someone's not inspecting to make sure things are right. The next thing, that's where, to be cold blue, what does the temperature have to be? I believe it's called cold blue.
So you're sliding, Mr. Jones?
20 degrees.
Well, okay, out of the coldest day so far, please tell me, why wasn't it called on Black Friday? That was record-breaking temperature.
But it wasn't 20 degrees.
Oh, believe me, it's much colder than, so, so, okay, are you saying 20 degrees and it has nothing to do with the, just 20 degrees, it doesn't include the wind chill?
No. No wind chill. If it's 32 degrees with a wind chill of 19, that would then take us, put us in position to call cold blue on any given day. So we try to keep the powder as dry as we can, and we call it on the exact temperature. If it's not 20 degrees overnight, we do not call it.
Okay.
So we had, we had, our first cold blue was on Thursday.
Thursday, then like I said, it was even colder the next day, so, okay. Due to where a lot of the homeless said, yes, due to where they're not being treated the correct way. Now, another question I have for you, okay, homeless person, where they have their supplies next to them, if they go into a store or something, can they get a ticket for leaving their stuff there?
I don't have an answer, that's not an answer for a question for me.
And Captain?
Well, it would all depend on what they leave behind. If they left enough stuff to block the sidewalk, and people couldn't get by potentially, yes, you could get a ticket for that.
Well, I have to say, I'm surely seeing it for other different reasons, due to where, like certain locations where you don't want the homeless in the areas, due to where, I seen it last weekend from my own witness, where it wasn't blocking anything, with our officer thread, okay, where the lady just went to go get a cup of coffee. If you do not move your stuff, wasn't in the way, I would give out tickets, and believe me, a lot of other homeless are saying they're being ticketed like they're really littering.
If I may, I'd love to take opportunities to make sure that our public is aware of what the city of New Brunswick does for the homeless population. We are one of only two municipalities in the county, but we are definitely hands-down the best municipality in the county when it comes to cold blue. We are the only municipality that actually shares our cold blue with the county. The other municipality is Perth Amboy, we do not share their cold blue with the network. They only allow for Amboy folks to participate in their cold blue, which you can imagine is very small a number. Our cold blue is open to any and everybody in the county and throughout the state, so on any given night, we can have almost 60 people at the Henry Dust House, ranger from Philadelphia to as far as New York. I'll go even further, we have the most supporting needs housing in the county, hands-down. We have Elijah's Promise, we have J.J., we have Marcus University, we have the major hospitals, we have Cunningham, Kansas County, we have New Jersey reentry, we also have a number of, well, we actually have approximately about 26 food pantries and rising. And we also have the most outpatient programming for opioid addiction rehab in the county, if not the state, which puts us in a position to receive the county's homeless population, if not further. So the population that you see, I would invite you to have a conversation with some of them, and find out where they're from. I would also ask you to drill down to some of these other municipalities to see exactly what they're doing for the homeless population. And you will see that not only are we not treating them with the most, the utmost respect, you'll see that we're going above and beyond for the homeless population in New Brunswick and beyond.
Oh, yes, I agree with you. I'm not saying you're wrong at doing anything. I know, of course, from last year where you helped the homes. Don't get me wrong, I'm not going against you stating that the city doesn't do anything, but like I said, me witnessing something, I was just curious. I know, I know New Brunswick is the best with it.
I also invite you all to come from test, so you can, you can see how happens up through that.
Okay, sure, if I'm strong enough, I have no problem with volunteer or volunteer. I'm not going to make any promises, but like I said, sure, I don't mind volunteering for something. Okay, getting back to another thing, due to parts with garbage, I hope, due to where this is the end of the year, starting off a new year, I hope the city will put out letters to the residents of making sure their property is clean in a certain amount of time, due to where, like I said, New Brunswick is really looking very bad, due to where, what, they don't load their garbage cans correctly, like I said, what, they don't clean their properties. Well, I hope you will start getting tickets out for that more, and also the same thing with cleaning the snow from the areas. Well, like I said, hopefully you will put some more letters out, because wow, for somebody to put garbage out, load the garbage out on Thanksgiving, I don't think something's right. So I hope you will put out letters to state that, wow, come on, keep your property clean, follow the rules.
Director Roll.
Most of those properties that he speaks of are being summoned, but there's processes we have to go through, through the court system and all that, in order to bring it to closure.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more question I have, that's for Somerset Street. They did just repave the road, it looks beautiful, but due to where, I'm, I'm, just want to ask about parts of Somerset Street, I'm not sure what street it starts at, but will the part that has concrete and stone be replaced?
Parts.
Due to where the company said they weren't doing that part.
Danielle must be referring to Somerset Street from the Mile One Brook towards French Street, or towards Somerset Street. So that particular roadway, half of the roadway is part of Somerset County, and the other part of the roadway on the St. Peter's Cemetery side of Somerset Street is actually Millices County roadway. It's not New Brunswick's road, so we, I don't, engaging in Somerset County battles of public service, we're, the county road departments battles of public service, so it's up to both Somerset County and Millices County to make that decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I have a number of questions tonight, if you could, please ask Captain Miller, when was the last time New Brunswick had a deputy chief for police department?
Do you know if it's locked in or captain or anyone?
Not in my 26 years here. I don't think that I would.
Not in my 25 years.
So it's been a long time. Can you please ask Captain Miller, who would be eligible to be deputy chief among the current employees of the police department?
What are the criteria to be deputy chief?
I don't think it's been established yet.
Exactly.
Okay, it is a civil service position, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there would be a test, and would you need to have achieved some other rank first before you could take the test, or am I mistaken?
The, it is a civil service position, it is competitive, and having not researched it that closely, I would though believe that anyone with the rank of captain would be eligible to sit for the test.
So NJ.com released a large amount of data, a series of articles called the Force Report, and in that report, they note that between 2012 and 2016, New Brunswick Police Department used force 747 times, which is more than the vast majority of New Jersey police departments. Has any member of the council been able to review that report? Do you have any reaction to it?
I saw a little bit of it, and I just assumed that what's needed is needed. Sometimes it's average, sometimes below, sometimes above. Anybody else?
I reviewed it, but I'm not ready, the only thing that I could tell you is that some of the cases, I was looking at the time, we had 2012, and some of the cases were, to my understanding, to the best of my knowledge, things that you encounter as far, you know, like, you're supposed to be when they're putting their hands back to handcuff somebody. So I didn't see anything, there was a lot of those that I do encounter, to me, would be normal, part of the process when you are a police officer, so you encounter somebody over there, but I would not comment on anything else, because, again, there was a lot of them that I was reading, but the majority of them were just that. I didn't see anything that was, that caught my attention to say, wow, you know, there was a few, but not that many, that said, my God, we are using excessive force in New Brunswick, in a, in a, exceedingly, I don't know, even though there was a lot of incidents. And then I was looking at other towns, it's kind of the same thing, you know, even though they might not have each the size of the town, I'm beginning, so, so just looking at a glance, I think that most of that is part of their jobs, you know, it hasn't been something that they're brutally, you know, giving somebody a suspect of whoever it is. It's just to me, with my little knowledge, just basic procedures, when you're going to arrest somebody. Pepper spray, depends on what happens, you know, things like that, and I quote it, if I'm correct, Captain Miller, that's part of what is, the state considers a force.
I think you're on the right track, so there's a huge difference between
You're on the right track. So there's a huge difference between use of force and excessive force. I think a lot of people that are reading that report assume that it's excessive force. What it's not, use of force is a part of a police officer's job. And if you drill down on everything in there, most, the majority are compliance holds. And all that is, is taking someone's hand and putting it behind their back to handcuff them. It doesn't involve hurting them or beating them, as people like to assume. Again, it's a use of force report, not an excessive force report.
Thank you very much, everybody, for the answers. I do want to ask, is there any type of early warning system where if an officer uses force X or Y number of times, that there would be some, you know, mandatory review here in New Brunswick?
We've got to go.
Yes, it's all dictated by attorney general guidelines on the early warning system. Follow those guidelines, both by attorney general and Middlesex County prosecutor's office.
Okay. So, yeah, some things that stood out to me in the report were that, you know, a number of officers would have been flagged for review if this were other cities. So Los Angeles, 17 officers, New York City, 73 officers, Chicago, 90 officers. That's if New Brunswick was covered by their early warning system. And so I don't know how many officers have been reviewed by this early warning system, certainly not for these four years. But the thing that stood out most to me was that based on population, a black person is 269% more likely to have New Brunswick police force used against them. And I'd just like the council to respond and react to that, and perhaps Captain Miller too, if that is cause for concern for you guys.
To me, it's a cause of concern, no matter what the color of the one person's stuff. It is what it is. Anybody else?
Yeah, obviously, you know, it could any as of anything, it could be anybody. It just doesn't happen. I think it's, you know, it does, it's a statistic that is not just limited to New Brunswick. That's all over the nation. That's happened, you know, African Americans and brown people, brown code. I usually stop more, it's something that happens. So, and I don't, I'm not saying that it's right. So something that overall, everybody should be aware of and concerned and look at and see. But I think that we should also mention also that New Jersey hasn't been doing a good job either as a state. And that's why the attorney general is looking into the reporting, which that article talked about it also. What are the kinds of, you know, things that to improve, especially when somebody wants to get information about police partners throughout the state. So I think in anything, there is some recidivism, that there has to be some reforms overall. Same thing with joinites. But it usually tends to be that, you know, we all know that blacks and brown police side this provision will stop more and arrested more and they encounter police more than any other ethnic group in the United States. So it's not exclusive to New Brunswick.
Sure, but not, not every city was this bad in terms of the disparity. 269% more likely to have New Brunswick.
You have to look at the population also. What is the demographics of the cities that you're talking about? You can tell me why. If you tell me Newark, if there's any difference between Newark and us, or if there's any difference between New Brunswick or the towns with us. So you have to look at the whole picture. And I get it. I get what you're saying. We have to look at the whole picture in New Brunswick. What is our demographics? What is the demographics of the other towns that you are comparing New Brunswick to? You have to take it into account.
Absolutely. And I believe they do account for population and those demographics in there. But I'll follow up with you on those other towns. Moving on, that's been over seven years now that these meetings have been televised or have been recorded and broadcast online. I think that's a really good thing that the council has done, a good step you've taken. I know it's been alluded to now for a couple of years, that these meetings will one day be televised on the city's public access channel. Can we get an update on that channel and when these meetings might be able to be watched on cable television?
Any updates?
No, not when I can provide for you.
Nothing else, though. We're going to push it.
Okay. Could you please ask Ms. Bradshaw, who I understand was pushing the issue?
Ms. Bradshaw was not pushing the issue. But we did talk about this. Charlie's asked about this a few times in meetings. He's asked about putting all the meetings on our cable access channel. We don't have a plan to do that right now, but it is not something that is off the table.
Okay. Something that was, I guess is overdue now would be the opening of the firefighting museum in my neighborhood. It was alluded to earlier this year that this project might be completed by the end of the year. Haven't seen any work going on. Can you give me an update on that project?
I'm going to refer that to Mr. Valenti or Mr. Walz, please.
Yes. Admittedly, that's taken a little bit of a backseat due to the other issues and pressures that our office has, but the drawings are complete. There's a, literally a final, just a sanity check on the spec, and we hope to have it out to bid within the first two weeks of January.
Thank you for the answer. I know the Port of Education passed a resolution earlier this year supporting renaming Commercial Avenue to Robeson Boulevard after Paul Robeson, one of the most famous residents of our city. Something I wholeheartedly support. It's my understanding that all that it takes to make that happen would be in action of the council and the mayor. Can you tell me, is this something you support? And when might we see the council take action on it?
I'd have to look into it. It's not something I knew about.
I have a good head, but I won't say that.
Mr. Jones? So that's something that we're actively working on. It's part of the celebrating centennial of Paul Robeson's graduation from British University. So it requires a letter going out to the public, first of all, and making sure that residents are aware of the possibility of the change, as well as one to community meetings about the change, how it would impact residents along Commercial Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as, you know, the reason why we're doing it and how we can get residents of New Brunswick excited about everything that will be taking place come January all the way through to the end of the year. So not only would the street rename would be a big piece, but there are over 100 some odd events planned. The statue piece that should be going in the New Feast of Park, as well as the school being reopened on September 6th. So it's just one component of it, but the Robeson piece is something that will be played as early as within the end of this week. And it will be presented to council after the community input conversations.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and I hope the council will support it when it comes to you. I recall there being another article at NJ.com. This one was about which towns are the most friendly to the LGBTQ community. And New Brunswick actually ranked the lowest out of the 13 cities that the Human Rights Campaign evaluated. They said the city does not have non-discrimination laws when it comes to municipal employment. Is that correct? And what can be done to remedy that?
Me again. So that particular survey was a matter of process of how they receive our people work. We get the survey every year. They come to City of New Brunswick, they basically take a snapshot of what they can see without getting any of us to have a conversation with them or, and they give us a record, I mean, a number. We take that number. If we feel that that number is not accurate enough, we respond back to them with some information on why our number should be higher. We actually put a team together to do that this year. We actually identified almost 98 out of the possible score that we could have gotten. We've added an LGBT liaison to the administration, which is me. We also have added a coalition that looks, that identifies everything that we already have in place in terms of how do we support the LGBT community. We looked at our employee handbook. Our employee handbook definitely does comply with all the discrimination, anti-discrimination laws and practices. So we are compliant there. We should have received points there. What we were told by the Human Rights Campaign is that all of our findings and all of our numbers from 2018 will be considered in 2019. So wow, yes, it's a black eye for us, not being able to have our points translate to this particular year. We are confident that our 2019 score will put us somewhere around the top in the county, especially with us identifying what we already have. We also are regularly having LGBT. We have a coalition now as well that is looking at all these, these pieces to the puzzle. That consists of everybody from Pratt to Robert Wood Johnson Hospital to administration, wellness, well care, garden state equality, and I could go on, and the district, the school district as well. So I'm confident that we are doing everything that we possibly can to make sure that we are accommodating to LGBT community. And this all falls under the Human Relations Commission, by the way. So this is the work that's being done.
Thank you once again, Mr. Jones, for the thorough answer. The state appears like it's poised to adopt some form of marijuana legalization or cannabis legalization. I know they asked you about it before. Have any of the council members come to a conclusion about whether you would like to see marijuana legalized in the state and whether you would want New Brunswick to be home to a dispensary?
Well, I think I've already indicated that I have no problem with medical marijuana. I may have a problem, however, with the so-called letting anybody do it anywhere.
Okay. How about the bill that's before the state legislators right now? Is that something you support?
Well, there's a couple of them, actually. So there's just different ones. So there's some good in both of them.
Okay. And how about for New Brunswick? If that, for instance, that bill that passed committee, that were passed into law signed by the governor, would you pursue banning it or would you pursue bringing it?
As I said, I have no problem with the medical marijuana. I know about my colleagues. I do have a problem with, like, secondhand smoke and things like that. I want to make sure things are taken care of that way.
Okay. Yeah, anybody else want to add? Okay. So there was a correspondence at the last meeting regarding water contamination, Jersey Avenue and Delman. My notes are correct. Is there anybody who could speak to that letter that came in and what that means?
Correspondence? Is that revealed?
From the last meeting, I think it might have come from DEP.
Specifically what I believe was issued, because we looked at it, it was certainly not our portable water system. We suspect it was a groundwater detection, and that's the typical kind of notice that it was. So it was something that could have been there for some time, but it was certainly not in the drinking water system.
Okay. So the city got burned about a half million dollars by those two employees who are waiting sentencing at the water utility. Can you give me an update? Has any of that $500,000 been recouped by the city?
Yeah, I can't answer that. I guess not to speak of the matter while the investigation is still a little.
Okay. Will the mayor be giving the state of the city a dress at the beginning of the new year?
Yes or no? I shouldn't know who does, though. I think he typically does. You certainly can ask him.
Okay. And then finally, just a quick question. I did want to, since we're coming up on the end of the year, ask if there are any department heads in the cabinet who have, you know, put in for retirement or announced that they're going to be leaving? Can you tell me, maybe Mr. Lockwood would know if any of the department heads are going to be leaving?
I do. I can't say that they, whether they've expressed it or not, but Mr. Patterson has put in an application for retirement, as I have.
Well, thank you, folks, for your service, and I'll follow up with you afterwards.
Can we deny it?
I'm trying to stay here. What are you going to do without Charlie every two weeks?
Let me count the ways. Just again, I just think of, give the city council's condolences to Mr. Shami on the loss of his mother. So keep him and his family in your prayers, please. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Brendan Kaplan. I live in New Brunswick. And I just wanted to very briefly say that in support of something I've been thinking about for the city for a while now, servants, not cynics. So many people try to use the mechanisms of government and public participation for their own purposes. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that on December 8th, in support of Code Blue, Archangel Raphael's mission, who's an on-the-ground community organization that feeds the homeless and provides a bunch of other wonderful services, is having an event. It's called Glow and Gru. It's kind of like a glow-in-the-dark party. And I am one of the top-rated video game players on earth for Geometry Wars. If anybody thinks that they can beat me in that game, I will donate $500 to that particular cause. And if you want to come, put up a little bit of money so that we can all raise some money together for this cause, I think that'd be a really wonderful way to collaborate with each other. So it's December 8th at Fato Americano. At 10:00 p.m., I would love if anybody from council or the other department heads here could come participate. Thank you very much.
Also, we note that on Friday is December 7th, which would be the tree lighting ceremony at Monument Park. Obviously, everyone's invited, dressed warmly. Anybody else?
Motion, Jerry?
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes, thank you.